We'll call our meeting to order. Being the first meeting following the election, I wanted to thank all of the -- we had five candidates run, and I just wanted to send a thank you out to each of those candidates for thinking very highly of Carmel Clay Schools and really wanting to do what's best for our schools as well as advocating for public education. And we're going to continue with our work and have a smooth transition come January. And with that, we'll have roll call. Mr. Kirschner?
All Board members are present.
Thank you. Pam, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item on the agenda is consent. May I have a motion on the table to approve consent?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
If I might interject, next meeting, we're going to give an update on bus driver situation. Started the year okay, got some challenges, like anything with a good economy, these are the positions that are challenging to keep filled. We did have some success last year with the incentives, so we're going to bring back a report next meeting on that for the Board to consider.
Thank you, Nick. Any other items to discuss? All those in favor of supporting consent signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Next, we have one discussion item. Our discussion is Bylaw 0142: Election and Appointments. Pam and I have been, as part of the Policy Committee, have been working on this particular bylaw for a couple of years now. And this bylaw really defines the districts for the district seats and not the at-large seats for the school board. Just want to review that. We have to live in a specific district, but the entire community votes for those running in the opposite year of our general or at-large members. Thank you. So what we ended up doing, you know, we discussed this in the fall of 2013 and reached out to the Hamilton County Surveyor to provide us with our current Board District status on population and the proposed Board District status. I know the background, we do list a number of things over the last 15 years, we've not redefined our Board Districts, and we've had quite a large population growth and shift. The precincts have been redefined in Carmel Clay based on the population growth, and with that, we thought it would be good for us as a Board to look at our, the map that had been designed back in 1999. That being said, we reached out to the Surveyor. He provided us with the current and a proposed Board map and what the populations are in District 1, 2, and 3 based on the 2010 Census Report. And you'll see, it's, there's quite a large discrepancy. District 1 is at 33,000, District 2 about 31,000, and District 3, just barely 19,000 individuals based on the 2010 Census. We've provided two separate maps. Our current one, which is, does not follow any specific precinct lines, and that would, what they provided to us, what the Surveyor provided, does follow precinct lines. We can choose either way if we want to slightly modify what was provided to us, but we have a couple of maps for you to look at, and we have some rationale for perhaps exploring changing. Defining residential districts as compared to electoral districts is far different, and it's not a simple Board vote. We would vote to change it than, and I mean, when I say change, I mean redefine our Board, our borders for each of our districts. The second thing we would do is then public, have a publication of notice of the new plan and have that advertised in our local papers. So that would be the current. We have to have a 120-day remonstrance period, and once that ends, we would then share this with the Indiana Board of Education for them to decide one way or the other. I've been told that they would approve it if we hadn't have, if we do not have any questions or concerns during that remonstrance period. And at that point, that is when the Board would actually take action to vote. What we would be voting on now is simply what we think we'd like is the design. David Day would write up what to define these, the border, and then we would vote to advertise this change. And with that, Pam, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
I know when we, sorry, when we received this initially, there were some areas that we tweaked a little bit because we felt that the numbers weren't the way we wanted them to be. And so I think District 3, we redid a couple of the boundaries down in the bottom along the river, and then over here on the riverside, I think we added a little bit over there as well. But that, and we were watching the residential numbers when we were doing that and trying to even the three districts out the best we could.
Yes, Kathy?
This may be a silly question, but are current people serving in district positions still living in their same district?
They are, yes.
Okay.
Right. If you do an overlay, which I did not have the capacity to do so with my maps, but if you, I drew them in with a marker. If you do an overlay, they're very close to where they are. Carmel Clay 1 or District 1, the bottom chunk just shifts.
To 3.
To 3. And that adds about 10,000 people.
2 is different as well.
So, and you'll, you will notice that District 1, 2, and 3, the new districts, we're sitting at about 27.5. District 2 is 26.8. District 3 is 28.9. And the reason we decided to have that slight discrepancy is because there is quite a, there's a lot of potential growth in 1 and 2. We still have a lot of building going on, and District 3 is pretty well built out. So we don't anticipate much growth from that particular district. It would be our intent to bring this back to the next meeting for us to take action to request permission to advertise. So please feel free to, more questions and discussion.
Okay. Well, I, thank you for your efforts to get this done and to spell out the process. I guess my initial comment would be, one thing that I liked about the old district where there were more straight lines than trying to jut around and cut precincts out. And I think it'd be important to be able to say District 3 is everything south of, and I don't know if that's 116th, and make District 2 be everything in the middle. And I don't know, you know, what that does in terms of population spreading it out, but I just think, especially since the fact that this is, the only thing this does is it sets out where the candidate lives, not where people vote. So I don't see any reason that we should follow precincts line, precinct lines, just because then this could be confusing to someone that was considering to run, and, oh, I live in this one little thing that sticks out, and I'm really not in that district. So I don't know if it's appropriate to go back to the Surveyor and say, you know, what would it look like to, I guess, I guess the easiest thing would be to move that chunk that's blue on the river, make that Carmel Clay 2, and that-
That's a very, very dense populated area.
Right.
And that would be something to consider. Now, if you want to provide some ideas, I can send it off to the Surveyor and have him give me some populations. That would work.
Well, we did, when we did this, we did follow, we had numbers of people who lived in these specific little areas, and so that helped us redefine our boundaries so we knew exactly what the populations were in each area. Down in 3, the reason it has that little dip is because one of those is a precinct, and so we were following precinct lines throughout that area and giving us some more people to add to Clay 2, which needed more people.
Okay. Well, I mean, if you could share the one with the numbers, then I can look, and if I have suggestions, I'll share them, and if not, I'll let you know.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or ideas you'd like to share?
Just, I know this has been a long road, so thank you for hanging in there, because this is something that needed to be done for a while, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any, okay, seeing that there aren't any other questions or concerns, we will go ahead, identify the populations in those various precincts and share them and come up with some ideas, and have a more tentative, or a more tentative, a more firm map before our next meeting for us to review. And we'll just email that out to everybody, and then we'll bring that to, for action at our next Board meeting. And with that, we move on to our topic, our workshop topic. Dr. Dudley? Oh, no, I don't. Thank you, Ms. Tricia.
So typically, I give legislative updates on our regular Board meetings, but I had talked with Leila because so much has happened in the last three weeks, and I wanted to keep everyone abreast of what's going on, and she agreed to go ahead and give a report at tonight's workshop. So since my last report, Dr. Wall and I have met with Representatives Shibley and Tor, and also with Senator Kenley. And if you look, here are our Carmel Clay Schools 2017 legislative priorities, and okay, I guess that's it. What we do is we use this format to, as kind of an outline during our conversations, and it helps keep us on, you know, focused on what we've all discussed here at our meetings. And so with that, our first priority has to do with adequate and equitable funding for public education. And if you look at 1B, Representative Tor explained some of the background of the original construction bill, and he did verify that the $2 million and $2 and $5 million amounts that were, that were set, you know what, this doesn't have, this is what's confusing me. This format doesn't have like the full goal here, so it's missing a little bit of something, but this'll be fine. Anyway, the $2,000 and $5,000, $2 million and $5 million amounts that were set were a bit arbitrary, we thought, and he agreed that's what it was, and the legislators kind of talked about that, too. Let's say a building project in a, an urban area wouldn't equal the expense or something in a rural area, things like that. But all in all, all three legislators we spoke with agreed that there is room for improvement in this area. And then if you look at 1D, Senator Kenley gave us some background on this area. He believes that Indiana's flat tax system will suffer if we start carving out tax credits for different causes. And he said, basically where this came from, that some states in the United States passed some tax credits, up to 90%, to kind of jumpstart voucher programs in their states. And so our legislators tended to look at this 50% tax credit as a compromise. And then we talked about, well, then that kind of puts those of us that haven't, don't have the tax credit at a disadvantage, and he said, well, he agrees in hindsight, but that gives you at least a little bit of history of where that all came from and something to keep our eye on as we move forward. Then our second legislative priority has to do with referendum and different issues along those lines. If you look at 2A, Brian Smith, the Executive Director of ISBA, has been working with the Department of Local Government Finance, or DLGF, and others to write acceptable language for a potential bill allowing capital project referendum ballot question wording to be more accurate and informational. If you recall, the ISBA legislative priority last year dealt with operational referendum ballot language, and this year with capital project, whereas our legislative priority deals with both, and we think there need, there could be progress made in the transparency of language for both ballot questions. But at least one of the legislators that Nick and I have spoken with has expressed interest in taking a more active role on this bill. So right now, Nick and Brian Smith are working really closely together to get back to the next step, so that's really good. Then our third legislative priority has to do with student testing. Both Representatives Shibley and Representative Tor were basically appalled to learn that the 23-member panel tasked to recommend an I-Step replacement, that that process has been so flawed and inadequate, and I don't think they quite had their finger on what was going on there. So they were appreciative of that information for them to check into. And then in response to the last sentence here that says, "In addition, the state should no longer require the use of summative test results in teacher evaluation," Senator Kenley shared that current law, the wording that is used requires some amount of teacher evaluation be based on standardized testing. So in his mind, as long as we would be okay with even as small as 1% of a teacher evaluation be based on student testing, that actually that would need no language change, as small as 1%. So that was actually very enlightening that that sum was actually put in there purposely, and that was talked through with, by our legislators. And then as I reported last report, Senator Kenley, before we met, had submitted some questions of his own to us. So we actually, when we met with him, actually started with his questions. And he first brought up tax increment financing, or TIF, and Senator Kenley's hope is that some additional TIF money from the city could somehow negate the need for any operational referendum for CCS or for other corporations. And so we discussed possible benefits if school corporations would receive TIF money, and we also talked about the benefits we feel CCS already receives as far as high assessed value and low tax rate due to economic development stimulated because of TIF districts. We explained that the TIF areas are included in the assessed value for the referendum fund, and therefore the referendum fund would receive no additional funds whether they're TIF districts or not. And we also reminded Senator Kenley that the referendum fund is not subject to the circuit breaker, so we don't lose any funds whether they're TIF districts or not that way. And then in addition, we talked a little bit about, it's important to remember that beginning in 2009, the General Assembly, or the General Fund is funded by state revenue. So really, the General Fund has no direct ties to local TIF anyway. It's a whole different system at this point. Next, Senator Kenley explained he wanted to talk about the budget and education issues related to the budget. And his appropriation priority the past several years and going forward is to increase teacher base pay partially by districts incorporating performance bonus money into the base pay of teachers. We explained that that would be great, but it wouldn't necessarily be fiscally responsible of us, of any district actually, minus, you know, absent a commitment from the state to higher ongoing funding through their budget. So you can see that this presents a bit of a quagmire, but it lent to a really nice conversation. And then in addition, Senator Kenley really commended CCS for differentiating between the bonus we pay, we award highly effective teachers and effective teachers. Some districts don't differentiate, and he said that the differentiation that we use runs more in line in what the legislators intended when they put that performance pay forward. So that was nice. And then finally, though not included in our legislative priorities, and he recognized that, he did want to highly caution us to watch out for any possible link between a pre-K initiative and the intent by some for this to create a new voucher school feeder system. So that would be something to keep our eye on as things go forward. That money, and it's, he had to do with accounts through, that were mostly federal accounts that are often used by church-related preschools, and that that would be an automatic, not an automatic, but an easy road of a feeder system. So that provides, since Indiana doesn't have cap at this point, then that just adds more interest, and you can see just like a smooth row without looking at different options. And then always we end our meeting, and we ask our legislators or the leaders we're meeting with, what can we do for you? And when we asked what we could do for Representatives Shibley and Tor, Representative Tor expressed misgivings at the low grade he and other legislators received on the Indiana Coalition for Public Education 2016 Report Card. And as I mentioned at my last report, this is really just one measurement that you may or may not judge, these legislators are judged by five education-related bills, and you may not agree with that, you might find it unfair, or you might find it fair. Representative Tor found it unfair, and I just want to say, I think he has a good point in some respects. There is really so much more to the work a legislator does than how he or she votes on five particular bills. Here in Carmel Clay, we really appreciate and greatly value our relationship with our legislators and the continued effort that they have made to reach out to us and vice versa in conversation, and that honest discussion is really the way we're going to hit good policy for our students. So with that, I just wanted to publicly invite anyone to read up on this measure and draw their own conclusions, and you can do that by Googling Indiana Coalition for Public Education, and the Report Card is right there to click on and go get more information. Or you can go to www.icpe2011.com. Either way would get you there, and it's very simple to follow. And then I really actually want to send out a kudos to Representative Tor, because obviously he watched at least part of our meeting online, if not all of it, so I thought that was pretty good. And then we asked Senator Kenley the same question, what can we do for you? He actually thanked us for reaching out and having these very honest, open, transparent conversations, and he said really the best way we can help him is to continue these. And then, the only other thing I have to add is at this point, Dr. Wall and I, with Colleen's help, we have three other meetings scheduled for the next about month or so. So I'll be able to update you on those in about a month. So thank you.
Thank you, Tricia. That was very comprehensive and extremely helpful, and we do appreciate all your work, you and Nick, in this effort. Now, we're moving on to our workshop topic, and it's going to be our District Technology Implementation Plan and Canvas Update.
Great, thank you. And this evening, we are excited to have five of our educators here to share with us a little bit about our technology implementation and Canvas. We have Mrs. Anna Rorio, Mrs. Kristi Cloud, Mr. Evan Williams, who is a teacher at Clay Middle School, Mrs. Kristen Kennedy, who is a teacher at Smoky Row, and Mrs. Kristen Kessler, who is a teacher at the high school. Turn it over to Pam.
Thank you. We are so excited to be here tonight to share with you the amazing progress we've made thus far on our technology integration plan, as well as our implementation of Canvas so far in the district. We want to start by talking a little bit about where we left off last June when we last met to talk about tech integration, and give you kind of a big picture update on where we're at, and then we'll get into some of the details about specifically what we've been doing since June. So this was a three-year plan that you were given way back when, and really laid out for you kind of our big picture next steps. Specifically, we're going to focus tonight just on 2016, 2017, and those items that are listed in the column, and where we're at now and where we're headed as a district. So so far this year, we have completed sharing our technology integration plan and vision with major stakeholder groups throughout the district. We've also added a technology integration specialist to the team here to assist in training at all of 15 of our buildings, as well as central office staff. We've officially adopted Canvas as the LMS for Carmel Clay Schools in grades K through 12, and we've also given every single certified staff member a mobile device to start using. And we'll talk more about that in just a little bit. Items that are in progress, and very actively in progress right now, is we're starting to roll out the influx of student devices, so those actually just started coming the last couple of weeks, and will be continuing through January. We've started all of our teachers, our technology leaders from each of our buildings in a professional development program that we're calling Amplify CCS. We'll talk about that in a minute, too. And then we are continuing to meet, we've met already, I believe, three times with our Tech Integration Committee thus far this year to talk about what we need to do next that's on the plan. So we've been actually working on how we better communicate our vision, the branding process, how we're going to collect feedback for next steps, especially when we look at what are we going to do in a couple of years when it comes to devices for students and staff. And then in planning right now, we're going to be working on bringing out the idea of the vision and branding to the greater community. That part is in process and in progress with our Tech Integration Committee. We're also planning right now site visits for Tech Integration Committee plus admin who are interested to go and visit schools that have similar demographic or are local to around CCS so that we can learn about what others are doing in their tech integration plans. And then we're, Kristi's team is going to continue, they're working on the infrastructure and wireless access, I believe, for this summer. We have all 15 buildings slated to receive an update to their access points, so that is to come this summer. So they're getting ready for that big improvement to the infrastructure. So first, we're going to talk about how we've been communicating with stakeholders. When the Tech Integration Committee started their research, anytime we looked at a plan that was successful, and those weren't easy to find, by the way, when we looked at technologies, districts that were implementing technology well, almost, I can say, every single one we looked at talked about the importance of communicating and making sure everybody understood why you're doing it, how you're going to do it, and what the vision is for that plan. So we started back with you, back in June, as well as our district leadership team. The day after school was out, we had every district administrator here in this room, and we went over the same plan that we went over with you, sharing with them how the committee came up with their ideas, what our plan was, and what our big why was, what's the moral imperative. So that's been the crux of all of our work, and making sure that we share that with all of our stakeholders. We then rolled that out to our certified staff. We actually did it in two different waves. One, we had at our C4 conference. We have a lot of teachers during the summer who love to learn, and they want to be ready when the first day of school comes. So at our C4 conference, I actually ran four, I believe, four sessions for people to come who wanted to do a preview of the plan before the school year started. And so I was able to take up to 100 teachers in each session and had very full sessions each time. In addition to that time at C4, teachers were given an opportunity to interact with demonstration devices, so they could start thinking about what were the devices that they wanted to use, select for themselves, but also how they might use those with students when the influx was coming. So that started already in the summer. Then we packaged that presentation again for our administrative team, shared that with them, and then all of our administrators at each of our buildings rolled out that plan to their staff. So everybody received the exact same message in all 15 of our buildings, as well as had an opportunity to interact with the demo devices at each building as well. Then we also were able to share the same information with our coordinating council, and again, we kind of repackage that plan for administrators so that they could take that, that plan that was a little bit more customized to our parent-teacher organizations, and they were able to roll that out to PTO meetings when they had that request back at their building. So all of our coordinating councils received kind of the big picture plan, and then they had a way to also bring that back to their building with their building administrator if they were interested. And then finally, we also shared that plan with our community expeditions team. So while this is our, not going to be the end of all of our communication with our stakeholders, it was a really important first step for everybody. And feedback has been, from what I've heard anyway, really strong in this area. I have yet to hear a teacher who doesn't know what the plan is or why we're doing what we're doing. I think people felt like the plan had a lot of authenticity into it, as well as a lot of voice from lots of different stakeholder groups. So so far, we're, I think we're on mark in terms of communicating what this vision is. So the most exciting part so far this year, at least for me, feeling kind of like Oprah a little bit, is the device distribution piece. And our technology team, Kristi's team, has done a phenomenal job preparing the devices for us, making sure they're organized, giving them out to buildings, as well as supporting staff when they get their device, and making sure they know how to log on. So if you remember, from way back when, seems like years ago, but it was just this June, we talked about how we were going to roll out these devices. The plan was that all certified staff would receive a mobile device by the end of the 2016, 2017 year. 2016, 2017 year. Everybody has received theirs thus far unless they have deferred, and we only had a very small amount of teachers who actually deferred. They could choose from the three device types. So we had iPad Pro, the HP Chromebook, and the Windows convertible tablet. And as I said, we have pretty much, everybody has received their devices at this point unless they've deferred. And you can see a breakdown of how teachers have selected devices. We have 285 teachers select iPads, 696, so the majority of our teachers selected an HP convertible tablet. 24 teachers selected a Chromebook. You're going to have a chance tonight to explore the Chromebook a little bit. And then we had 29 teachers who deferred until January. So we'll come back to those 29 teachers in January, ask them to make a selection at that point. You may wonder, why did so many teachers move to the HP convertible tablet? We pretty much expected that to happen. We knew, I think it's just an interesting indicator of what teachers are comfortable with moving to next. And it gives teachers who are used to their current ecosystem, what they see on their desktop every day, it's a nice, kind of easy, natural transition. Many of the tools are the same, it's just a little bit different, but you get the added benefit of it being mobile, as well as touchscreen and the tablet experience. So again, teachers will get an opportunity to interact with all three device types once the student devices come in. So let's talk a little bit about what the device influx for students might look like, or is going to look like, I should say. So we have purchased 1,500 Chromebooks, 1,500 HP convertible tablets, so the exact same devices that the teachers will be getting, and 1,500 iPads. Chromebooks actually will be done with the rollout as of Monday, I believe, into all 15 buildings. So we're kind of putting them into waves. So we started with Chromebooks, and then we'll move to the tablets, hopefully by December if all goes well. And then January, we should have iPads rolled out to teachers. If you wanted to know a little bit about how, what the numbers would look like, now these are average numbers. So again, we are giving devices out based on the number of students per building. So the ratio is the same across all buildings. So on average, each elementary will receive around 180 devices, so 60 of each device type. About the middle school, on average, they're looking at about 125 per device type. And then the high school, we can give you the exact number. So they have 469 Chromebooks, they're getting 469 iPads, and 469 tablets. These will come on carts, so we've purchased carts for them. They are in sets of 15, and if you recall, there's a reason why we did that. This is supporting our current and supplementing our current BYOD. In addition, we do have, still have labs, we have stable labs in each building, plus we have some laptop carts already. So these will be supplementing those devices in addition to the BYOD. We also didn't want just to have one-to-one-to-one, and everybody have their own device. We want to give an opportunity for people to learn how to use devices in more collaborative manners as well. We don't really want to see just 30 kids sitting on a computer during class time. We still want to see that interaction. And so packaging them this way will help with that, we believe. So I want to make sure I have all of my notes here. So one of the linchpin pieces to this whole plan is high-quality, job-invented professional development, particularly around quality practices and technology integration. So we have started an initiative, K-12, with our technology leaders throughout the district, and we're calling it our Amplify PD. And the idea of amplification comes from a book that we've been reading called Geek Heresy by Kentaro Toyama. And he talks about the law of amplification when you talk about technology in society in general today, and specifically in education, that when we use technology, we can, it amplifies whatever it is you're doing. So if you're using good practices and best practice in instruction, it's going to amplify student learning to the benefit. Conversely, if you're not using best practices in your classroom, whatever you're just layering technology on, it could actually have adverse reactions and implications. So we're really focusing on, in this professional development, how we can leverage technology with all the great things we're already doing in Carmel Clay Schools in order to amplify student learning to the betterment of students. Seems simple, but we want to make sure that we're not foregoing all the great things that we're already doing and just layering technology on top of it. If you recall, when we met back in June, that was a really big theme from our research, that it has to really be integrated into what we're already doing. It shouldn't be taking the place. So that's a focus of our professional development. The way that we're organized, and we'll probably want to come back and talk to you about this later in the year, once we get it up and running with everybody, we actually are meeting with our middle school group tomorrow. We have elementary group, we have middle school and high school, and we're arranged in cohorts. So K-5 are arranged into feeder-school cohorts. Then we have our middle school, we have two separate groups for middle school, and they're all of our tech leaders from our middle school groups. We have a STEAM group, so it's all the teachers who teach science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. And then we also have a humanities cohort, so we're looking at social studies, language arts, rural language, special education, and one more I can't think of off the top of my head. But basically, we've divided them into two cohorts, and we're following the same content in each, but customizing it to the cohort, as well as the level that we're working with. So our topics include many of the things that we talked about back in June, technology leadership, how we promote student dependence or onboard students for using technology and working in digital environments, models for a meaningful integration, what digital citizenship is and how we should be integrating that. One of the goals in our work is that all of our districts, all of our schools in our district become commonsense media-certified schools. So we're, that's one thing we're working on throughout all of our groups. Blended learning models, digital resources and tool curation, how we work, use technology to leverage collaborative environments. Also, we want to start looking at, we will be looking at, the K-8 Computer Science Standards, which are new to Indiana this year, and how we need to integrate those into what we're doing. And then at the end of the year, we'll be meeting for K-12, we want to see some K-12 interdepartmental articulation and alignment. So we meet three times throughout the course of the year. We've already had our fall meetings. We'll have one around January and February, and then one at the end of the year that will be more reflection. Throughout the year, when we're not meeting face-to-face, we're modeling an online blended environment. So teachers will be engaged in flipped assignments and activities via Canvas. So we'll still be communicating with teachers, but modeling working in that Canvas environment as well, so that we don't have to meet face-to-face as much. One note before I forget, we also had a hashtag on Twitter for all the work that we're doing with Amplify. And we've asked teachers in our meeting, but also outside of our meeting, to share anything that they do on Twitter using the hashtag, hashtag Amplify CCS. And if you search for that now, you'll see quite a bit, not only from our meetings, but already things that are happening in the classroom as a result of our work for Amplify. Okay. And then lastly, we want to talk a little bit about Canvas implementation and where we are with that. The very beginning of the year, we worked with our technology coordinators, and we have Kristen, Kristen, and Evan, who, in addition to being teachers, they are also technology coordinators for our buildings. So that means that's a stipend position where they work to help outside of their classroom day, support teachers, and often within, when they have a time, to support teachers in technology professional development. And really, the focus of their year, I would assume, is pretty much Canvas this year. And so we worked with that group of teachers, in addition with the building administrators, to come up with some basic goals for the end that teachers should be accomplishing with Canvas by the end of the year. Canvas is a pretty robust tool, and we have a lot of teachers to get onboard with Canvas and to teach them how to use Canvas. So we wanted to make the experience really seamless for our teachers and give them the support that they needed. There's a lot to learn in Canvas, and then we have a large continuum of users when we look at what they're able to, what people are able to do in technology within our staff. So working together with our admin team, as well as our tech coordinators, we developed some goals that we'd like to see teachers work towards over the course of the year. So this is really a learning year while we get everybody acclimated to this new digital environment. So these are some, these are the goals that we've set forth. Really, they're very substitute in nature. When we talk about models for integration in technology, we talk about one of the levels of technology integration is just substitution, taking what you're currently doing in other environments and moving it over into a technology environment, digital environment. So some simple things that they do this, are working on this year are updating their profile page in Canvas and adding some about me or biography information about them, making sure that they have a course or courses published in Canvas. And again, they have the year to work on this, making sure that they're encouraging their parents, once they have that course published, to join their class, and make sure that they're following on and logged on with their students. Having anything that they use an external link, so it's a textbook or a common website that they use in their classroom, we'd like them to have those links posted within Canvas. So a student or a parent could go into Canvas and easily navigate to commonly use resources in their classroom. And then we have a note at the bottom, oh, I should say also, as they get going in Canvas after they publish their course and got people onboard, then posting just their daily assignments or using announcements or the calendars or any other important dates, so that we're using that as a simple communication tool for students and parents. So, and we know, after, you know, having worked through this, what we would, what these goals set out are not necessarily the same for every role within Carmel Clay Schools. So as part of that learning year is understanding how will a media specialist use it, or a special education resource teacher use it. And we're working with their admin team and those special groups to figure that out this year. So it's very flexible in what everybody's doing. The whole goal is, let's keep learning and growing in Canvas and start using that as a tool. So we do have a lot of support systems that we've been working on to put into place. So you can see, this summer for teachers, we had something like, we had two different types of sessions that teachers could do in a face-to-face environment, as well as online. This summer, we had 240 people signed up for our face-to-face training with our district technology specialists. Plus, we had open office hours that are not documented in those sign-ups. So people could come throughout the summer at open office hour times, bring their computer, and we'd have somebody who could help them with whatever they were working on. In online courses over the summer, we had 100 teachers, K through 12, take up, join an online course that we developed to allow teachers to learn about Canvas on their own, with support from a teacher online. Additionally, we have an online course running right now. We have over 300 teachers enrolled in that course. We had many sessions at our C4 conference for teachers. We also had a needs assessment that each school gave to their teachers back at the building so that they could learn about how they needed to customize professional development in their building based on skills. We have times that teachers and schools can schedule with their instructional coach, their tech coordinator, like the teachers we have here tonight, and/or the district tech specialist, to get small group training, whole group training, and even one-on-one training. We have lots of online Canvas guides and tech tips and videos that teachers can access, and we have those all embedded within our Canvas portal, so teachers can easily access those. Finally, when all else fails, we also have our Kayako system, where if a teacher has any sort of struggle, they can enter a Kayako ticket, and then our tech team picks that up and reaches out to that teacher individually. Administrators have all the same types of supports. One thing we're looking to add to our admin meetings, we've already been having at every admin meeting a show-and-tell, where either we do a tech tip, or so that administrators can learn more about Canvas, or we have, give them opportunities to share with each other about what they're working on or seeing in Canvas. We're looking to add office hours after our admin meetings, so that if principals want to stay and have our district tech specialists work with them a little bit and teach them some new things, those are an options that we are exploring right now. They are doing, many of our administrators are using Canvas as a way to run their staff meetings. And so we've had a lot of success already in how they're using Canvas, just in terms of staff professional development. One thing that surprised us a little bit, but in, but after thinking it through a little bit, we shouldn't have been that surprised, Canvas is a little bit tricky to get up and running. And I think we all assumed that kids would just be able to jump right on and figure it all out. And we realized we need to get some more supports pretty quickly for students. So in addition to working with teachers to make sure they weren't just assuming that as well, and having teachers walk students through simple things like, here's how you take your Google Doc and turn it to a PDF and upload it to your course, before they expected them to do that, we also added a student help and FAQ link in Canvas that they can access in Canvas, but it's also on our website, as well as My CCS. We also sent them links or have places where they can easily access the online Canvas guides, video tutorials, those are all embedded in Canvas, as well as on the website. And then they can always inbox their teacher, there's a little help feature where they can inbox their teacher directly if they have questions. Additionally, not surprising, is that we also had parents with questions, because they were at home trying to help their student as well. So we have similar tools for our parents as they use Canvas. So in addition to receiving, once a teacher is ready to use Canvas and has published their course, we have kind of a template email that a teacher can send out with directions for getting logged on if they're not logged on already. And then we have a parent help page with FAQ, as well as a link if they have technical issues with Canvas that they can fill out if they have any issues. And you can find that, again, right in the Canvas course, in My CCS, and on the CCS website. And additionally, they have access as well to the Canvas guide, so they look at the observer guides and Canvas video tutorials. And helping support all these pieces, we have our district tech team and admin. We also have our district tech specialist, so we have two now working for the district. We have our building tech coordinators who help. We have our instructional coaches, who we're also feeding kind of professional development at their monthly, bimonthly meetings that we have with our coaches. And then at the high school, where we have so many more users, we have our CHS has a tech cadre, and their admin team is working on training their teachers and providing support as well. So they've been, we've been really trying to have a nice foundation of support for teachers, no matter where they are in the continuum of usage. So and these are just some numbers to date as how Canvas is being used. So right now, we have 23,788 active accounts in Canvas, 247, 2,478 published assignments, 472 published quizzes, I think this was as of last week. And on average, we have 21.1 logins per user so far. Now, it's a little discrepant, if you look at the number of courses created, 12,019, but you need to remember that that comes from the Power School integration. So for elementary, for example, I think we have somewhere between 11 and 14 courses in one elementary class, because every area that's on your report card, conduct, homeroom, reading, math, all those areas, spelling, are all listed as an individual course. Many elementary teachers, when they're getting into Canvas, and you'll see an example today, they start with their homeroom course and are building content in homeroom, and sometimes in the math course. So they're not going to necessarily publish and have active 14 classes. So, and then we have teachers still who are learning, so not everybody has published a course yet. So we're all, you know, there's still a lot of learning to happen this year. We have many who are ready, and they're up and running, and some who are still dipping their toes in the pool and getting the support they need until they're ready to publish.
So now we're going to have some time to talk about Canvas and for you to explore, as well as to learn a little bit more about Chromebooks, as Chromebooks are the first device types that we have that are rolling out to students. And as you can see from the graph that we showed earlier, not many people picked a Chromebook because they don't know a lot about it in many cases. So we're going to have you have an opportunity to explore Chromebooks, and we're going to have our tech coordinators share, do a little Canvas tour with you. So I'm going to invite you to leave your devices if you have them already, get your seat, and come and join us down at the table, and I'm going to pass it over to Kristi.
That's great. So she's exactly right. If you'll go ahead and open your Chromebook, it should come on for you automatically, that's one of the great benefits of it. If it doesn't, you have a power button in the top right-hand corner that you can click on as well. And then it should come up to a login screen there. So we're going to go ahead and let you fill in your username, click next, and then go ahead and fill in your password as well.
And it's probably going, if you haven't logged in a Chromebook before, it's probably going to allow you to select a photograph to go along with your profile, so you can go ahead and select one of those from that screen that's popping up.
I'd like you to go ahead and select that icon, which should then hopefully open the Canvas homepage for you, and I want you to go ahead and log into Canvas. So, I'm still logging into Canvas now. Go ahead and log into Canvas, yeah. And you don't need your phone. Okay, so the next step that we're going to take, if your browser did not open automatically, you'll notice at the bottom left of your screen, you'll have several Canvas buttons, and down there, or, pardon me, several Google buttons, and down there at the bottom, you'll see a Google Chrome icon. I'd like you to go ahead and select that icon, which should then hopefully open the Canvas homepage for you, and I want you to go ahead and log into Canvas. So, I'm still logging into Canvas now. Go ahead and log into Canvas, yeah. And you don't need your phone. So, I'm still logging into Canvas now. Okay, on my screen, you'll see an example that may look a little different than yours, and we're going to attempt to get you to this page on your Canvas screen. So, the first thing I want to point out to you, and this is going to be hard for me to talk from over here, because I really want to be up there in front of the screen, but on the far left-hand side, you have a dark blue bar. That is considered your global navigation in Canvas. So, that blue bar is never going to go anywhere. It's always going to hang out there on the left-hand side, and have different items that you, as a student, or an observer, or a teacher within Canvas might use. So, the first thing you'll have at the top is your head, which is representing your account. You could go there to write your profile, you can go there to log out of the tool, that's what the account button is used for. Then, you have a dashboard, which, I won't take you to mine right now, but it will have any course that you're enrolled in. You'll have a little picture of all of the different courses, that you, as an observer of your own students, or you as a participant in a course, will have. Then, you have another place that's called Courses, which lists an even greater number of courses, depending on how many you're enrolled in. Then, you have your calendar on the left-hand side, which is a great tool within Canvas, because it really allows you to see all of your upcoming assignments and events, all on one single calendar. So, no matter whether Evan adds something to my calendar, or Kristen, or Anne, or Brian, whoever adds something to my calendar, I can see them all in one place. And I, as a student, can really start to manage, what do I have coming due, when it's due, what's, what are the expectations? And then, I have a tool called Inbox. An inbox is a little bit like email, except it's contained within this system. And it allows me to message my teacher, or to message other classmates, who I might be collaborating on a project. So, that's all part of that dark blue bar, which are part of your global navigation. Then, the next bar that you see on mine, where it says Home, Assignments, Discussion, that type of thing, is a Course Navigation. So, to get you there, I'm going to go ahead and have you click on your dashboard, and at the top, I'm hoping you're seeing a message that says you have a course to accept, and I want you to go ahead and click Accept to that message. And once you've accepted that course, your screen should look much like mine. Perfect. So, now, it looks like we've all successfully arrived at our course, and so now, we're looking at that white bar along the left-hand side, which is your Course Navigation. Each teacher within their course has the ability to customize which links are available to their class, and they can turn off links that they're not ready to use yet. So, if I'm just dipping my toes in the water, that's okay. I might have even fewer items on my display, and you're going to see different settings as you watch each of these teachers present tonight. So, where we are right now in this course, is we are on the homepage of the course. You've got a little listing of your teachers, some information as you go down, and we're actually using the syllabus of the course, because you will see at the bottom of this page, your upcoming assignments, that we're actually going to participate in tonight. So, with that, I'm going to hand it over to Kristen, who's going to guide you through your first tour of Canvas, and help you get started on your first assignment. Thanks, Kristen.
Thank you. I'm Kristin Kessler, and I'm an English teacher at the high school, and also an instructional coach. Canvas has just changed the way that I do a lot of assignments, and communicate with parents, and it's allowed me to do a lot more self-paced learning for my students. So, I'm going to show you a quick tour of my class, of my high school class. This is a video I made. So, my course is set up with a homepage that includes a ThingLink. This is just a picture that has links to outside resources, and I always try to include resources about our current topic of study. So, right now, Frankenstein, you see the biography, you see that they have a link to the full text, in case they forgot their book, and then, there's also an audio version. So, this is just a nice landing page for them to find some extra resources for class. And then, when they scroll down, they can see our embedded calendar. It has all of the assignments on it, as well as what we're doing in class each day, as well as the main assessments that they have for this quarter. So, the homepage will always stay the same, always have that same look and feel, so they know what's coming up, and they can find all the information there. I also direct my students to go to Modules to find the content for class, and when they're in there, it's broken up by unit. So, right now, we have our Quarter 2 unit, and this is where they can find the calendar, the links to all the poems that we're reading in class, the assignment that relates to that. And then, they can also find the embedded notes that I go over in class, and sometimes I'll also link my flipped lessons here as well. And so, they can just see those notes that I covered in class. Anytime, they can find those in the modules. So, the modules is really nice, just to organize and keep everything in the same place, and they know that they can go back here to find any more resources that we cover in class. The other part that I love about Canvas is that students can see all of their upcoming assignments, so they're linked on the calendar, but they can also look here for a list of everything that's coming up. And then, another great feature I use the most is the discussion board, especially for literature circles, students can go here and engage in a group discussion about their novels. So, that's how I set up my course. That homepage is for resources and upcoming information, and then, the modules is where they can find all of their notes and resources. All right, so I'm going to walk you through how to do an assignment. If you click, at the top there, it says Assignments, and you can click on Canvas Assignment. There are two questions we'd like you to answer, as kind of a review of what Anne presented. So, what are the three devices teachers were able to choose? Which device can access Canvas? If you see the blue button at the top, it says Submit Assignment, that's what you'll be able to click on in order to submit. If you scroll down, you can see the rubric that will be used to assess you, and the point breakdown. This text box right here is where you'll type in your answers to the two questions at the top. Yes. Yeah, and you'll see the blue Submit Assignment button at the bottom, once you type it in. You'll click Submit Assignment at the bottom. All right, so if you've submitted, Evan's going to share a little bit about the middle school, and show you your assignments.
I'm the one that gets to grade you all. All right, so I'm, oh, we're going to leave this page. There we go. Yes, my name's Evan Williams. I'm at Clay Middle School. I'm the journalism teacher there, and actually say pretty much everything in my own video. So, I will just let myself do the talking right here. Hello, my name is Evan Williams, and I am the journalism teacher at Clay Middle School. I'm an elective course, so I see my students in rotations and quarters. So, I see my kids about nine to 10 weeks, and we have four quarters every year. And because of that, I like Canvas, because I don't have to recreate the wheel each quarter. I can save what I've done previously. For example, in my yearbook class, I always have my students go to the homepage. I created this homepage over the summer, and I don't need to recreate it again. So, this page is always saved, and I can import it into any other class I teach. I'm a big fan of buttons, very much like the first grade video you will see shortly. And with that, it's just a visual way kids can see on their mobile device, this is the first thing that pops up, and when they click on any of these buttons, it takes them to the course within their mobile device. If they're on the computer, they will also see this white menu here, and a lot of them tend to use the white menu when they're on their computer, and they use these colorful buttons when they're on their mobile device. I typically have my students start with project modules, and the way I break up the class is based in modules. For example, I was out last Friday, and Canvas was a really helpful tool to allow me to date the module, 11:11, and then, I was able to create an audio post, and explain to the students what I wanted them to do. They were then linked to their agenda for the day, and so, they had to walk through the five different things I wanted them to do, and they have access then to some pictures I created, to walk them through an editing process I wanted them to do. And, so, it's just very helpful with the modules, to just keep information organized, much like the high school. Another thing I love about Canvas is the grading. So, for example, students had to turn in some rough drafts, or their stories. So, Story 1 was one of the things they needed to turn in. When I click on that, that takes me to the assignment as seen by a teacher, and I've got, I was able to embed in the assignment, a little webpage I created, that explains what their stories need to have. And since I created this one webpage, I can embed it into any story assignment page, without having to recreate it. So, that's really helpful. So, the ability to embed websites and other things into Canvas is really helpful. Also, rubrics are a huge benefit. I can upload rubrics and save the rubrics throughout my courses. So, since I've created this rubric already, I don't need to recreate it. So, when it times to grade, when it's turned to grade a story, I click on the Speed Grader button, which is a grading app within Canvas, and it pops open a whole new screen. And by doing that, my students usually link their stories to me here, and then, I click on the rubric, and I can see the rubric, and I can click the rubric as I'm grading it, and then, leave comments, and give them feedback. And I can give them video feedback if I would like, I can give them audio feedback, or I can even attach something, so they can see maybe some suggestions, or a handout that gives some suggestions. And when I do that, I grade it, and that grade goes right into the grade book that's online, which is really helpful. So, grading is one of my favorite parts about Canvas, because I grade from my phone, I grade from my home computer, I grade from my school computer, and it's all in one place. Another thing I like about Canvas is the announcements. I haven't used it a lot, but I really like that I can let kids know, for example, that I was out. So, remember I'm out, make sure you get your copies due, if they don't have a copy, let the person edit with you. And these kids typically get these announcements on their mobile devices. And so, being able to communicate with students has been really, really easy through Canvas. I've also enjoyed that with the Inbox tool. If I need to remind a kid to turn in an assignment, I can do that through Inbox, if I forget to talk to them during class. So, that is how I, just a few ways I use Canvas at the middle school level. Okay, so I'm going to go back, and I'm going to show you what it looks like to grade your assignment. So, I need to leave Student View, and go into Teacher View. And so, by doing so, let's go to Modules. And you all turned in the Canvas assignment, and in my video, you saw there's something called Speed Grader, and you're going to see this live now. And so, it opens up a new tab, and I've got the HP360 tablet, and so, like, last night on the couch, I had it flipped over, so it was just sitting nice on the touchscreen. And grading with the touchscreen is, if grading could be fun, it is, because you're tapping away at the rubric and stuff, and it just makes it so seamless and easy. So, I can see all my student work, an assignment is turned in when it turns yellow, and so, I can even see kids who haven't turned it in yet. And so, I'll start with Ms. Dudley, and we'll see that the three devices are Windows, and all three have access. So, pull out the rubric, you are correct, and hit Save, the grade goes there, you got a six out of three, so you did even better. And then, I just go to the next student. Chromebook, yep, yep, and then, I just go click, click, and I can even say the comment, so excellent, exclamation point. And then, I can just hit Submit down there, which, I'm so used to looking at the screen while I do this, I should probably just look at my computer. And then, hit Save, and then, I'll just keep going. Ms. Hackett, we've got, yep, 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 view rubric, click, click, Save, and keep going. It's really fast. Oh, sorry. I just wanted to show one comment, otherwise. But if, and it's, you know, I feel kind of bad, but when you know what you're grading, it really, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, you did, you did, you did. And this is, I'm glad you did that, because students will panic, and they'll be, I submitted, but then, I submitted again. And what you see up here is a timestamp of what they submit. And as a gracious teacher, I will look at both of those, go back to my rubric and say, you were right. And then, I can submit that and save the grade. So, grading really is seamless. I'm just going to assume you gave me all the answers, and then, finish off. I don't know if I really need to go through everybody, do I? I do want to show you one more thing with the grading, close that out, and you go back to your case. Grades is another thing I really like, because in the grade book, it's hard to kind of see all the students' work, especially when you want to call a student up and just say, hey, you're missing a few assignments. So, I love doing this, and we'll just, we'll pick on Dudley, since I know her probably the most. I can just say, Ms. Dudley, you've not turned in this assignment and this assignment. And what's nice is, I can just pull the kid up to my room, or to my monitor, and they only see their work. So, the whole grade book isn't there, so they're like, looking at other grades. So, this is a great way to do that. And when I'm posting the grades, you don't see the button yet, but there's usually a button that says Post a Grade Book, and when I click on that, it just goes straight to the online grade book. So, I don't have like, a grid of paper where I'm, you know, adding in the numbers, it just happens all in one sitting. So, I've really used the grade book and the assignments as my core way of grading. Even if kids turn in an assignment, I'll use this as my grade book and do type in the stuff, and then, hit Post the Grades, just because it's a little more visual for me. So, that is how grading assignments has been pretty user-friendly in Canvas. So, I'm going to move on to the other, Kristin. I'm going to switch us back to Modules here.
Thank you. Hi, I am Kristin Kennedy, and I teach first grade at Smokey Row, and I'm also Smokey Row's Technology Coordinator. So, I have a hand in a lot of the professional development that goes on there, and I love Canvas. I am very, I'm one of those people that say, yes, that the little kids can do it, because we do it every day in my classroom at Smokey Row. So, I, it has completely changed a lot in my room, because I can give the responsibility...
I can just say, Ms. Dudley, you've not turned in this assignment and this assignment. And what's nice is I can just pull the kid up to my room or to my monitor and they only see their work. So the whole grade book isn't there, so they're like looking at other grades. So this is a great way to do that. And when I'm posting the grades, you don't see the button yet, but there's usually a button that says Post a Grade Book. And when I click on that, it just goes straight to the online grade book. So I don't have like a grid of paper where I'm, you know, adding in the numbers. It just happens all in one sitting. So I've really used the grade book and the assignments as my core way of grading. Even if kids turn in assignment, I'll use this as my grade book and do type in the stuff and then hit Post the Grades, just 'cause it's a little more visual for me. So that is how grading assignments has been pretty user-friendly in Canvas. So I'm gonna move on to the other, Kristin. I'm gonna switch us back to Modules here.
Thank you. Hi, I am Kristin Kennedy and I teach first grade at Smokey Row and I'm also Smokey Row's Technology Coordinator. So I have a hand in a lot of the professional development that goes on there. And I love Canvas. I am very, I'm one of those people that say, yes, the little kids can do it because we do it every day in my classroom at Smokey Row. So I, it has completely changed a lot in my room because I can give the responsibility now to the six-year-olds. Whereas before, if I wanted to do anything with technology, I had to email home first. I had to email Mom and Dad or send a note home and have Mom and Dad have a hand in it. And now I can do it. I can post it to Canvas. Every first grader in my classroom knows how to access that. And whether it's a link or a video or a flipped assignment, for example, tonight's math homework is to watch a video about ballpark estimation and it's on Canvas. The parents don't need to be involved at all. It's complete responsibility of our little learners. And so that's one way that it's really transformed Room 1. And my video is a little bit different than Evan and Kristin's because mine was actually created as part of one of our teachers' online courses. And so mine is geared toward talking to those teachers who may be a little bit more hesitant or a little bit worried to get their feet wet with Canvas. Hi, everyone. I am Kristin Kennedy and I teach first grade at Smokey Row. Welcome to our first grade Canvas course. I have our homeroom course set up with pages and all of the different pages can be found using one of these main eight buttons. The big colorful buttons make it easy for the primary kids to access and navigate our Canvas page and they're very familiar with what they'll find behind each page. My favorite buttons, my favorite pages are the This Week's Author and the Big Question because it gives me a chance to push out resources for my students that we don't have time to share always during the class time. So we get, you know, I get to share videos and book lists and other ideas for them to see extra learning with our Big Question or with our author that week. And it really helps them to push their thinking, push their learning, extend their content beyond the four walls of our classroom. And I just, I really love that way to use Canvas because it lets them explore and I can add a variety of resources all on the same page, all about the same topic. And so you can see here just some of the examples from This Week's Author. If you are nervous about getting started, I started small. That's my goal. Just start small. Start with one thing. And both years that I've started with Canvas, I've started my classes off with a discussion. And the discussion is a really great way to start because first of all, it's, it's pretty simple on the teacher's part because you just have to post a question. Students get to respond, they get to interact with the content by responding and thinking of themselves. And then they get to respond and interact with their classmates and see their classmates thinking and question their classmates and agree with their classmates and be respectful. They also get to interact with you if you take part in the discussion as well. And I've just found that starting with a discussion really, really opens up their excitement for Canvas. It makes you feel good because you've succeeded and you've accomplished something really awesome. And it gets, you know, everyone excited to jump in further and to try something new with Canvas. Good luck, have fun, you can do it, it will be wonderful. And going back to Evan's point too, there was, earlier in this semester, I was gone and, you know, in part of my subplans, they went to, they went to the computer lab and they used Canvas as a discussion. And I didn't even think about this part of it, but then my phone started dinging that I was getting all these responses. And so then not even being at school, I'm in the car on my way, you know, elsewhere and I can respond, I can have a discussion with the kids while they're at school and I have a substitute, but I can still interact with them and be part of the discussion in real time. So that was really, really cool because it was something I didn't even think about until my phone started going crazy. So thinking of discussions and thinking of starting and, and a really great way to get your students involved, if you go back to the Modules tab on your Canvas, there is actually, if we go scroll down to the Elementary Course, which is what we're, is part of the module we're in today, right now, and there's a discussion and you can tell it's a discussion because it has the icon, the speech bubble icon. And I use that, my, my kids are very visual and so they know that that means there's a discussion at hand. So if you click that, you can see the question. And the question is, how might Canvas help the students and families of Carmel Clay Schools? Because I teach first grade and I have a wide variety of needs and, you know, student abilities, I really love the feature of Canvas where I can add video and I can add audio. I post announcements, I post video announcements because they think it's hysterical to see me sitting on my couch posting an announcement about, you know, the homework tomorrow or to remember to wear Smokey Row spirit gear. And so, but another way I use it that's really, really awesome is that I can put it into a Canvas assignment or a discussion or a quiz. I can record my voice reading a passage for a story for those kids who need it. I can post it reading this question, so as an example. How might Canvas help the students and families of Carmel Clay Schools? When you're ready to share your answer, make sure you click Reply at the bottom. So for those students who aren't quite comfortable reading just the text there because they are only six years old, they have that option to see a video or to hear the voice to remind them of the instructions. And so as I said in those audio instructions, if you wanna take a moment to turn and talk to a neighbor, how might Canvas help the students and families of Carmel Clay Schools? When you feel confident and comfortable responding, you can click Reply right here. The really nice thing about Canvas is that it's that same text box you saw earlier with the assignment. You don't have to relearn a feature. Everything looks the same, no matter if it's an assignment, a discussion, an announcement, all of the input choices are the exact same. So you may go ahead and do that. When you're done, you can click Post Reply. And because I am an unkind teacher, I have it set up to where you have to post something before you can see anybody else's responses. So once you click Post, then you'll be able to see anybody else who has clicked on Post. And just as teachers can, students can submit audio or video recordings as well to respond to assignments or discussions. And so now that Dr. Wall and Dr. Dudley have both submitted, if they were to click on this discussion again, they could see each other's or anybody else's who has responded and they can reply to that thread. And it's a really great way because I get the authentic chance then to talk to my students about digital citizenship and being kind and respectful in responses and having constructive conversations with this medium in kind of a safe place of a first grade Canvas course.
Looks like we get just about everybody. I see some questions embedded here. We'll pull questions, we'll kinda wrap up and then we'll let you ask questions about Canvas in particular or any piece of the tech plan. And we have three great experts, as you can see, they did a phenomenal job, I think, sharing how technology and Canvas is used, not just at the upper end where we would expect it to be easier, even though it's not necessarily all the way through first grade. So thank you to Kristin, Kristen and Evan for sharing your expertise with us tonight. Okay, so to wrap up, I know you received the presentation always in advance, but I also kinda thought I would show you a little bit in Canvas as well that you can embed presentations, such as the one that you received tonight. So if you'd like to see how that looks, you can go back to your course navigation and into Modules. And if you click on Modules, I have placed in the course for the evening where it says, Next Steps. You can click on that. And this is the part of the presentation, this was just part that you received. So what's really neat when we embed, this is a Google slideshow, you can, as the user, click through it yourself as well. So you can actually navigate through the PowerPoint. I can show you here, but you can also navigate at your own pace. So we have a lot of teachers who use Google Slides as a way to communicate information to do notes. I think you saw that Kristen Kessler, she used this as a way to give notes during course time. Even kids can interact with these slides if you set them up the right way. Kids can actually add to the slides within the course. So we're gonna talk a little bit about where we're at with Next Steps. Again, going back to where we are in the process, we're right now, as I shared before, our committee is continuing the work on creating and branding the vision and looking at what next steps will be with devices. One of the important pieces that we're working on right now is coming up with a tool to be able to collect feedback about how teachers are using the devices that they have on the carts with students so that we can start collecting data about, if you recall, back in June, we discussed which, we want to have three different device types because we wanna learn about which device is best for the teaching and learning that happen in a classroom at a particular grade level. So we're working on developing a way for teachers to provide feedback as well as students about how those devices are being used so that we can make some next steps for future planning in terms of devices. We're also looking at that idea of branding across the district and engaging our stakeholders in that. Those site visits again, and then our wireless infrastructure is the next piece over the summer and currently we even have some work happening now on that. So I love this quote to end from Michael Follen, who's an educational researcher that many of us in education know and love. I'll give you just a minute to read that quote. Having worked with this plan now for over a year and a half, from the very initial stages to where we are now, and not to say we don't have a long way to go yet, I don't think this will be a plan that's ever completely finished. One thing that I have felt really positively personally about that's happened so far is that we truly have developed this plan, implemented this plan, revised this plan, supported this plan as a larger educational community. We don't just have people from ESC or admin running the plan, saying what's going to happen, determining what the next steps are. We truly have had feedback from so many different groups and we have been tweaking that and playing with that all along the way. I know Dr. Wall talks a lot about we do things with teachers, not to them. And I really do feel like this plan has continued to symbolize that idea that we really don't want a plan that's just going to be top-down. We really want something that grows organically from within. And if we don't do that, we know what the outcome will be, that it will not be a sustainable improvement to our district. And with the work of our teachers, such as our tech coordinators like we've had today, our tech integration committee, our tech PD leaders that we have through our Amplify, all of our admin team and all the teachers who are coming to all the different professional development opportunities that we have currently offered, we're already seeing things grow in great leads and strides. So we're really excited about where we're going. We have a lot more work to do. We are excited and we hope to be able to share with that, that new changes in the near future, our next steps in the near future. So in short, I guess, thank you for letting us share with us, with you tonight. What questions might you have? And we can, any of us can answer the questions, depending on, Kathy.
I just have one and it has to do with the kind of the six-year-olds and how do we handle, as a teacher, if you post things, I mean, if a student doesn't have computer access at home? Do we have any of that?
Yes, and that's something we actually discuss in our middle school level. We always make sure when you're using technology, you're using like Canvas, to keep those students in mind that they have access to ways to use it. So we have something called Core Plus for middle school level. So if a lab is open, students can use Core Plus, I assume, to access that assignment. I've got a lot of students who can be able to journal with a teacher, so I never assume a student has a computer access at home. You know, I widely hope they do, but if not, I make sure any assignments are due in my room. And if they're doing homework, I would say a crossword, if they do at home, that's fine. That's one way I approach it.
In first grade, I mean, it's a little bit different, but I always provide time and they know by now we've done enough with lessons, what we call them, and they know what kind of type that works. So tomorrow, during one of our math workshop rounds, they, I have two, the two classroom computers set up writing that video. So they know, the expectation is that they go over and do a quick watch of three minutes of video. And so they can, that's their first timer of watching that before we dive deeper into the topic.
Well, that's cool. I know we're not teachers to do the S and R setup as well. And then we also have so many devices or laptops that we can, for students to access to their computers or S and T, or S and Core Plus, for students to go and access the computer and access it.
Pam?
Yes, I don't know if I knew that, but anyway. How long does it take to set up one of these lessons? It's, I'm, I'm just thinking about all the time that I had in my classroom when I was teaching and, and I know he said that he gets to reuse stuff. But how long initially does it take to set one of these things up and how often are you replenishing the lessons?
Really, I mean, I'll speak first on behalf of kind of big picture here, but really just depends on the teacher and what they wanna move into this environment. So as an elementary, or really any teacher might say, I'm just going to use this right now and try discussions. Literally, the class is already set up for you through Power School, so when you go in that classroom and all the students are already listed in your course. So as a teacher, all I honestly would need to do would go to Discussions, click Plus, write the discussion in, and that's created. So that's within seconds. We have a lot of teachers who, if they're very, if they've been using tech and integrating that already into their classrooms before Canvas, some of it's just as easy as going in and pulling, importing that content in right into your course. So it really is variable depending on how you're going to use Canvas and to what degree you wanna bring that tool in. And then you also have the variable of, you know, how tech savvy are you too? So if you really wanna build it out huge, you can. If you wanna see what these three guys have been working on, they have built lots of pieces into it. But you don't have to go to that. That's a very high user end. And right now, we're just, you know, really basic. How can we do some of the tasks we're already doing and move them over into Canvas to make that that one spot where teachers and parents and kids can go to get that information?
I wanna do that too. A teacher can request a course and so a lot of our teachers, and I feel they kind of tested, what they call a study course, and they're subjectively, like, we did like seven great studies, four together, and like take different avenues, and you worked on that, you worked on that, and it's all in a study course. And they're able to copy that content as their own resource. And so, but there's a lot of collaboration that's been available too. So if you're willing to do that, it helps with that.
That's a great point. We also have access down at the bottom of the global navigation. You'll see the Commons. And what Evan's team has been doing is kind of like building a Commons within their, our own district. But the Commons, you can save content to the CCS Commons or to the Greater Public Commons and import content. So if I know I'm gonna give a certain quiz, I can add that quiz to the Commons and other teachers in my district can pull that quiz into their course as well. Kristi?
I noticed some of you are looking on the global navigation for Commons. Because you're not a teacher, you don't... not a teacher, you don't see.
Thank you, yes.
But that's why it's not showing up for you. Your time is like, wait a minute, what's that?
Yes.
We don't have, because I'm not a teacher.
Only teachers have access to that tool, yes.
Another question. Do you ever have any of the systems go down so that you lose information?
Kristi, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, I mean, there's never one system that probably goes down, it goes out. You know, we always have to be prepared for today's rules when something goes down at another cost in the first book. And it's, to my knowledge, so far this year, has had one college that for about three blocks, I mean, after them, that's beyond that, they, they have had another college. We haven't had a one on the list. So that's something that we might, we have a number of systems in place to overlook this, if something goes down, have to put some connection. And ultimately, whether it's bad or something happens, that's unavoidable. These thirty that have happened, we have to, have all kinds of.
So you've never had a, a teacher lose a, a student assignment or, because I remember there were times in, in the old days, when I would put grades in and I thought that they would be in the system and then I came back to school the next day and they were not there. And I'd have to start all over. So.
Not to my knowledge. Now, probably when that, if that has happened or where we found people who've said that's happened, we've found typically it's user error and we have, through our ticketing system and also the great relationships our district tech specialists have, people reach out to them directly and often we're able to recover things if there, if it was a user error. So in terms of losing content, if the content was in there, I don't believe we've had an instance where people have lost content unless, you know, we had an, if something broke while they were working on something, that would be different. But I think once content's in there, I don't think we've lost anything.
And one more question. What would be a, give me an example of a school system that you might go visit that would be comparable to what we have?
I'd have to remember all the lists that we have. We kind of have a brainstorm list. We have some just locally here, and when we look at HSE, Noblesville, Zionsville, are three very local ones. We've talked a little bit about possibly going to Penn Harris Madison, Crown Point, is that right? As well as Center Grove as being a possibility. And we have some others that if we are able to and if we can make it work, that are even further away, possibly out of state. So we're still.
Does that mean you see Canvas anywhere?
Depends. We've kind of, we haven't talked about, originally, we wanted to see different places that have different management systems. We're, we'd like to see, I think, places that have learning management systems, but I, I think we'd also like to see places on the list that have different device adoption pieces, some that are maybe iPad only, some that are more HP Windows world, some that may be our only Chromebook, and look at that in particular. I think we already know our LMS at this point, most districts who have tech in their district have some sort of LMS. So more so, we're looking at devices and how they're using and rolling out devices.
Do we have any idea the number of parents that have or have not, have been being one that, who've been guilty that I've tried to sign on twice and not had, the teacher asked for it and it's gone. Now I'm more motivated to see what a tool has done, but.
Unfortunately, we don't have any back number of parents that sign in because the way Canvas treats you is that they're a user and then you might be a, and a server, a teacher, a student. So for people, all of you right now are considered students because that's how you're enrolled in the class. They were kind of twice in the system because she was a parent and it's treated and it's a student. So rather would be kind of three times. He's a student in practice, he might have a class that he's been, he's part of it and then he has a, a parent as well. So it doesn't, it comes people's vocal time. So we know we have sixteen thousand students who had to come from the system, we know about two thousand, they have to come from the system, and we have a thousand, five thousand, so additionally, we have to be on that.
It's important to remember too, that parents can't see course content until a teacher has published it. So we are reminding parents, as well as teachers, that this is a learning year. So you may have a teacher who doesn't publish a course till later in the school year, so you may not be able to see anything yet. But eventually, you will be and you'll know from your teacher when they're ready to publish content. Pam?
Sorry. Got last question?
Good.
Are these, all of these offerings on Canvas, are they things that are already being offered in the Carmel Clay Schools or are these also online courses?
The online course was actually developed in Carmel Clay Schools by our supervisor, one of our supervisors of learning, Amanda Hoagland, with our two district tech specialists. So they actually developed the course and customized it for Carmel Clay Schools. It's not a course that's running out of it. And they are the teachers of that course. So that's happening now and we opened up that course. We already opened up the first quarter course and teachers who want to partake in it have this quarter to work on it. And then if they choose to, because there's six different modules, so you can do all of them, or you can do one of them, or you could just sit and look at it and think about it for a while and then re-enroll if you want to in the second quarter. So we'll be running courses every quarter and we have elementary, middle and high school level.
Okay, well, what I was thinking was, a, a teacher outside who might be able to offer something to the Carmel schools online as, as a course, but is not a, currently a teacher in the school system?
So do you mean for teachers to learn from or teachers to take content from?
Like the teacher outside, like it might be an ID tech teacher or a Purdue teacher or somebody who could create a course that could be offered at Carmel to the students?
Oh, to our students?
Uh huh.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Yeah.
Is it, is it, has the people really to do that, to offer online programming and have teachers outside who are in Sunday and I don't think it's like twenty ten something that we have a score.
Okay.
To develop online courses?
We start actually.
We miss open that opportunity, e-learning opportunity, and we did not have that. And that was, you mentioned.
But it's not coming from another organization and being brought in. It's our own, we, we would be creating our own to offer to our students, right?
Okay. Unless we get teachers pulled from the founders, do a lot of stuff out there that can change, add my own course and then either change if we want to or if we like to. But we're not interested in how sourcing our course.
No, 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 that's not what I meant.
Well, I can just clarify, we have no interest in that.
I was just thinking, you know, like, like if there's a Purdue professor who would like to offer a course for our students to, and you know, it would be offered on Canvas and the kids would take it sometime.
I understand there are a lot of opportunities we don't know yet, but I think this is our possible business.
The teachers aren't using Canvas to, to grade, to assign, it's not everybody using Power School or whatever.
Correct.
Are we transitioning away from Power School over to Canvas or are we going to continue with that?
You still need to have Power School because Power School is basically the host, I guess I would describe it as, and everything feeds into Power School. So Canvas communicates, that's one of the reasons why we looked at Canvas, because it communicates into Power School. So a teacher can either enter all their grades in Canvas and push them into Power School. They could enter some of their grades in Canvas, push those into Power School and enter other grades into Power School. So they could do both, or they could just only enter grades into Power School. Can I sum that up well, Kristi?
I guess I just, students are smarter than us in technology, I'm assuming that way it's acting.
Maybe a break in to like the report and it comes up.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you, thank you. This was so informative.
Thank you.
Really a fantastic summary and, and tutorial for us.
Great.
And you're here, so.
Thank you.
I just signed out. I'm just signing out of my campus.
Anything we'd like to share? Share my.
No, thanks.
Anything we'd like to share this evening, anything before I do? Fantastic. Give me a turn.